Four o'clock, I will call the February eleventh meeting of Planning, Program and Zoning Commission to order. First on the agenda is approval of the agenda for the February eleventh meeting. I would take a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye. And second on the agenda is the election of chairperson and vice chairperson for the period ending December first, 2025. I would nominate Cody Lystekow as the chairperson, second. Oh, I can't make it, I'm sorry.
I'll make the motion, Commissioner Shirk, to nominate Cody Lystekow.
In a second.
Second, Ewing.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye. And I would take nominations for the vice chairperson. What's that? Okay.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Alright. So we
You're up.
We just go on from there then. Alright, um, let's, we got the approval of minutes, financial report. Or did we get the approval of minutes? Okay, uh, go ahead and look over the meeting minutes and then when someone's comfortable, I'll entertain a motion on that.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes as written. Schoburg?
Second, Do Not.
Got a motion of second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next up, financial report.
This is Schrader with staff, so this is through December, which would be fifty percent, looking down through the expense side, most of them are pretty close with the total being right at fifty-two percent. And on the revenue side, um, we're a little under at forty percent, but again, we're only at fifty percent of the year, so. Looking pretty good.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Nope, um, let's, I'll entertain a motion on the financial report.
I'll make a motion to approve the financial report for December. Schoburg?
Thank you.
Second, Shirk.
Alright, there's a motion of second, any discussion? Uh, all those in favor of approving the financial report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. At this point, we will now entertain anyone in the council chambers to come up and speak on non-agenda items. If you wish to speak on a non-agenda item, please come up to the podium and state your name and address. Is there anybody on Zoom? We got a quiet bunch this month. Hearing none, we will go ahead and move on to new business. Uh, first up, we got a request by Levi Architecture on behalf of Troy Sandwiches for a site plan amendment to allow for a quick service restaurant in an existing building in the S1 Shopping Center District located at thirty-one forty-six Kimball Avenue.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Hold on, just a second.
The time is four oh three PM, and this is where we're gonna begin this, uh, hearing on the request by Levi Architecture, thank you. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by John Dornoff stating, "I, John Dornoff, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, aerial photo and site plan was mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five." Can we have a motion to receive and place this notice on file?
Do Not, so move.
Second, Schoburg?
There's a motion of second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that motion carries. Okay, now let's move on to the staff report.
Troy Sandwiches is requesting a site plan amendment to allow for a quick service restaurant in an existing building. The proposed site plan amendment would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular or pedestrian traffic conditions in the area. The property in question is zoned S1 Shopping Center District since the adoption of the zoning ordinance. Surrounding land uses and their zoning designations are to the north, there are medical offices zoned S1. To the south is, uh, the Bank Iowa Building zoned R4 CZ, multiple residence conditional zoning district. To the east is vacant land zoned S1 Shopping Center District and single-family homes zoned R2 one and two family residence district. And to the west are professional offices zoned S1 Shopping Center District. The surrounding area consists of professional offices and commercial buildings constructs, constructed around the nineteen seventies and the two thousands and single-family homes constructed between nineteen sixty and nineteen seventy. The applicant is requesting a site plan amendment to allow for a quick service restaurant in an existing building. The existing building was previously a funeral home. This change is why, in use is why a site plan amendment is needed. The restaurant will only take up a portion of the building. The property owner has not decided on what the rest of the building will be used for yet. A site plan amendment will be needed once plans are made for the rest of the building. The restaurant will take up one thousand five hundred and four square feet of the twenty-one thousand three hundred sixty-six square feet, square foot building. There are forty-three parking stalls, which is enough for the restaurant. The technical review committee did not have any comments or concerns about this request. Therefore, staff recommends that the request for the site plan amendment to allow for a quick service restaurant in an existing building in the S1 Shopping Center District located at thirty-one forty-six Kimball Avenue be approved for the following reasons. One, the request is in conformance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map for the area. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic conditions in the area. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. And with the following condition, that a separate site plan amendment request will be required when the property owner is ready to develop the remainder of the interior of the building.
Thank you, uh, is there anyone on the commission that has questions for staff?
I have one. So how did you come up with the, uh, the no traffic, um, impact? I mean, what calculation did you use, or why did you come up with that?
This is Schrader with staff, I, I don't think it was based on any sort of calculation, I think it was more of an assessment of the size of the use and the fact that it's located along Kimball Avenue. We don't anticipate this use would generate a significant amount of traffic, that it's gonna have any significant impact on the overall numbers on Kimball.
Do you know what the hours are, that they'll be open? Uh, the applicant, I think an applicant's representative is here, yeah, so they could answer that.
Would the applicant come, please come up to the podium, state your name and address?
Troy Morris, thirty-one forty-six Kimball Avenue. Proposed hours are ten to two, Monday through Friday, potentially open on the weekends as business grows.
Are there any other questions from the commission for, uh, the applicant?
Yes, this is Do Not. I was reading in the technical review notes about, um, engineering had put in a concern about no changes in hard surfacing. Had there been any concerns about hard surfacing in like the parking lot or in others, in other places of the site?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see anything changing, it's, it's paved, there are sidewalks, and so, I mean, we're not changing any of that stuff.
Okay, it was just a note in the technical review notes?
Yeah, Jamie Knudsen, city engineer, it was, it was gonna be a concern if they talked about reconstructing the parking lot or changing things, um, then we'd have to look at stormwater detention, but they're not, at this point, planning to change anything as far as the existing hard surface of the lot, so we don't have any concerns. It was more just, so the applicant understood that if, if they do reconstruct it, there's gonna be additional steps in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, any other questions? Is there anyone out in the council chambers that has a question? Anyone on Zoom that has a question? Okay, uh, do we have to close a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, uh, at this point in time, I'll entertain a motion to close a public hearing.
So move, Ewing.
Second, Shirk.
Thank you, there's a motion of second, any discussion? Uh, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Um, at this point, I will entertain a motion on this agenda item.
This is Schoburg, I'll make a motion to approve the request for a site plan amendment to allow for a quick service restaurant in an existing building in the S1 Shopping Center District located at thirty-one forty-six Kimball Avenue be approved with the following condition, that a separate site plan amendment request will be required when the property owner is ready to develop the remainder of the interior of the building.
Second, Shirk.
Thank you, uh, there's a motion of second, uh, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving this agenda item signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next up, uh, we will move on to a request by Gregory H. Stefan for a site plan amendment to remove a condition of zoning to allow for two additional homes in the R2 one and two family residence district located southeast of forty-one ninety-two Logan Avenue. The time is four twelve PM, and I hear it's scheduled at this time. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by John Dornoff stating, "I, John Dornoff, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, aerial photo and site plan was mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five." Could we have a motion to receive and place this notice on file?
So move, Ewing.
Second, Schoburg?
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you, uh, we will now get the staff report.
This is Dornoff of staff, the applicant's requesting to the removal of condition two from the conditions of zoning that was signed by the applicant on July fourteenth, twenty twenty, states the property shall be limited to the existing single-family home and one additional single-family home for this approval, and the additional homes would need to come back for amendment to this condition. The proposal would not appear to have a negative impact surrounding the area. The area is made up of, um, a storage business at the corner of Big Rock and Logan Avenue, residences and agricultural. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular pedestrian movements in the area as the home will be served by Logan Avenue, Highway sixty-three, which classified as the principal arterial. The area is currently zoned R2 one and two family residence district, zoned as such since the adoption of ordinance fifty-five sixty-nine, which re-zoned the property from A1 Agricultural District to the R2. Surrounding land uses and their zoning is follows, to the north residential and agricultural zones, R2 one and two family residence district, A1 Agricultural District, to the south residential commercial zone, A1 Agricultural District, and C2 Commercial District. To the east is agricultural zone, A1 Agricultural District, and to the west is residential Logan Avenue and agricultural zone, C2 Commercial District and A1 Agricultural District. Homes in the area were built between eighteen seventy-nine and twenty twenty-one, and commercial, the commercial properties were built in two thousand six. The applicant, um, requested remove the condition of, um, from the conditions of zoning to take part of the property, which was part of the property's rezoning in twenty twenty. As a condition of the approval, the applicant agreed that it only build one additional home, which was constructed in twenty twenty-one, but the land would be sold and that that land would be sold to the existing home, which, um, and the land was so, um, sold and, um, separating it from the existing home that was built in nineteen thirty, and the applicant, um, wanted, if they wanted to build additional homes, it would need a site plan amendment, which he's going through right now. Because this will result in a third and fourth split of lot, the applicant will have to submit a preliminary and final plat before two homes can be constructed. The, um, the proposed new homes, um, lots do meet the requirements for the R2 one and two family residence district, and they would be keeping with the future land use map, which doesn't access areas low-density residential. During tech review, engineering stated they would like to see a, um, approved sign installed on Logan Avenue to help, um, emergency services find the homes, just a basic directional sign. Therefore, staff recommends that the request by Gregory H. Stefan for our site plan amendment to remove the condition, conditions of zoning, um, to allow for two additional homes in the R2 one and two family residence district located southeast of forty-one ninety-two Logan Avenue be approved for the following reasons. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic conditions in the area. The request would not appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding area with conditions being met below. Homes to the north are zoned R2 one and two family residence district, and zoning to the south is C2 Commercial District. The request to allow new single-family, um, the request would allow for two new single-family homes with the following conditions, that the homes be hooked up to sewer and water, um, if they are extended to the area in the future, and that a MUTCD approved direction sign be installed along Logan Avenue.
Thank you, uh, are there any questions for staff on this agenda item?
Yes, Do Not. When will we need to see a, or when would, when would we see a preliminary and final plat, if that is needed?
This is Schrader with staff, that would, um, assuming that this is, uh, recommended for by the commission and then approved by the city council, that would be up to the applicant for when he would hire a, uh, engineering firm to do the necessary, um, plotting work and then get that submitted, so I would guess, you know, probably not next month, because that'd probably be too short of a turnaround to have all of that completed, but, you know, maybe within the next few months.
And so the other question I've got, I've got a second question, the other question I've got is, has the question of needing a private road in the area been resolved because there's more than one house now?
This is Schrader with staff, um, it's a, a private drive now, and it would, it would, that would not change. The question is whether or not it needed to be named as a private drive for addressing purposes, and engineering noted that although they weren't necessarily, um, opposed to that, they weren't suggesting it needed that, and, and noted that if it wasn't named, it just needs a directional sign, and there's, see if I can find it. What page is that? Page thirty, I believe, in the packet is what I put up on the screen is an example of what they're showing for a little directional sign that would just note, hey, these addresses, um, are located through this driveway, that way as your emergency service vehicle would be approaching on Highway sixty-three, it would know that those addresses are back there.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lystekow, I got a question for staff. Now, in order, in the, the habit of avoiding surprises, if this pro- property is replatted, replating would trigger the need for some stormwater retention, correct?
This is Schrader with staff. I'll defer to Mr. Knudsen. JB Knudsen, city engineer, no, it would not need to have a, have a stormwater detention plan. If he was going to put it for just another single-family home, if he was gonna plat this for five, six, seven additional homes, then we would require it, but since it's just gonna be another single-family
Two.
Two, we still wouldn't require it, no.
Okay, very good, it's just good to get that out there, um, thank you. Are there any other questions for staff?
I just have a question about, uh, if the, if the homes be hooked up to sewer and water if they are extended to the area in the future, so it's implying that the homes aren't gonna be hooked up, it's just a their own septic and underground.
And, and, and well, this is Schrader with staff, yeah, there's currently no public sewer or public water available in this area, so all of the existing homes in this area are on individual well and individual septic system. The proposed lot size at one point five acres or a little over the ones, one point six acres does meet the health department's minimum guidelines of, of minimum one point five acres if you're going to be on an individual well and septic, and that's a guideline, not an actual hard and fast requirement, but it, it'll, it'll meet their general guidelines.
Thank you.
Good questions, uh, any other questions? Is the applicant here? Would you come up to the podium, please state your name and address?
My name is Greg Stefan, I'm at forty-one ninety-two Logan Avenue.
Alright, uh, does, do any commissioners have, um, questions for the applicant? And do you've got anything to say on this particular agenda item, or?
This is not a, what do I say, a near-future project. It's, uh, actually the new neighbor that bought the other lot really wants to purchase those for future investment purposes, you know? If they should ever sell twenty, thirty years from now, we just wanted to make sure that this hurdle was taken care of before we proceeded forward with anything. I'm, in fact, if I find just one person to buy all three acres, that works for me as well.
Very good, thank you, um. Well, uh, if there's no other questions, I'll let you go ahead and sit back down, and I think we can go ahead and entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
So move, Ewing.
Second, Shirk.
Any discussion? Uh, hearing none, all those in favor of closing public hearings signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you, um, I will now entertain a motion on this particular agenda item.
This is Schrader with staff, I just noticed we had one additional person in the audience, were you here to speak on this request or not?
Sorry.
I am definitely interested in it, I live at one oh five East Big Rock Road. The property is kind of close to my property line.
If you do want to speak, come up, give us your name and, and then give your comments, name and address.
Uh, my name's Amanda Weber, I live at one oh five East Big Rock Road. And I was somewhat concerned about, um, the properties being divided up and the houses going up behind my house. It sounds like you're not necessarily gonna do anything about it right now.
It could be never. The par, the parries built there behind you are already burned up. You really wanna buy it, and I say, I need to clear this up, get it so that I can be in it, so.
Okay, just because I am really concerned, you know, um, there's the picture of our little neighborhood, right, and I have this circle drive here, the horseshoe one. And I guess it's just a really nice, peaceful, quiet little neighborhood, and we really like it like that. So, yeah, I was just concerned that it's gonna be noisier, you know, light pollution, because we do take the telescope out and look at stars and whatever. But I guess if it's just, uh, just in case for future.
And I'm not saying that it won't, but I'm not, I'm, it's not in the ne- in the near few years.
Mm-hmm. So you're putting that land up for sale?
The first people that have the first choice is the parries that built the other place.
Sure.
They just built that, and they're just, they're looking at, you know, maybe twenty years from now when the kids are gone, if they wanna sell it, they just wanna be able to say, there's lots there.
Yeah. Okay. It's just that it was agreed to earlier, you know, whatever, that there would be the condition two on there, so I guess that's what I was concerned about.
Thank you. For, for public records, since the applicant wasn't on the microphone, um, Amanda Weber just was worried about more homes being built suddenly, and, um, the, the applicant stated there was no intent to immediately build anything. Do we gotta reclose that public hearing then, or nah? Okay. With that then, I think we can now move on to a motion on this agenda item.
This is Schoburg, I will make a motion to approve the request by Gregory Stefan for a site plan amendment to remove a condition of the conditions of zoning to allow for two additional homes in the R2 one and two family residence district located at four one nine two Logan Avenue with two following conditions. One, that the homes be hooked up to sewer and water if they are extended to the area in the future, and two, that MUTCD approved direction sign be installed along Logan Avenue.
Second, Do Not.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
I have a question, Voight, um, I thought he, I thought he said that, uh, this is gonna be water and, I mean, a s- well, and septic tank, and you just?
If, if it comes to the area, they have to hook them up.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? Uh, hearing none, all those in favor of approving the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Uh, next up, we will move on to a request by A and D Auto Sales LLC for an appeal of the city engineer to allow automobiles to be parked in city-owned right-of-way for a car sales lot in the M1 Light Industrial District located at seven twenty-one to seven twenty-seven Birmingham Avenue.
This is Tamala with staff, request by A and D Auto Sales for an appeal of the city engineer to allow automobiles be, to be parked in the city-owned right-of-way located between the street and property line of seven twenty-one dash seven twenty-seven Birmingham Avenue in the M1 Light Industrial District. It would appear that the request would not have a negative impact on the neighborhood, another business in the area south of the property in question along the same street appears to utilize parking in the, in the city right-of-way with no complaints from the community, and the site has had parking in the right-of-way for many years, but the approval is now being required because of the recent change in use of the site to auto sales. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic conditions in the area, the property in question is in the Highway two eighteen corridor. Birmingham Avenue becomes Laporte Road and connects with US Highway two eighteen, but the property in question is further down. The lot in, the lot in question is zoned M1 Light Industrial District and has been zoned as such since the adoption of the zoning ordinance in nineteen sixty-nine. Surrounding land uses and their zoning are as follows, north, south and east, mix of residential and commercial zoned M1 Light Industrial District. To the west, US Highway two eighteen and a mix of C2 Commercial District and R2 one and two, one and two family residence district zoning. The area includes homes and structures that were built as early as nineteen thirty-nine. The rear portion of the property in question is partially in Zone X protected by a levy as indicated by the Federal Insurance Administration's flood insurance rate map. The future land use map designates this area as industrial, the proposed request is in conformance with the future land use map. The applicant is requesting an appeal to the city code requirement prohibiting vehicles from parking on the city-owned right-of-way located between the street and property line at seven twenty-one dash seven twenty-seven Birmingham Avenue. City ordinance four six oh two notes that parking is not permitted in the city right-of-way between the curb and sidewalk, the code states that businesses wishing to park in the city right-of-way must obtain a permit. The applicants will need to ensure that the lot properly follows section ten twenty-five two D of the zoning ordinance. Previously, a similar appeal requested by Wilbur Auto Body and Sales at two twelve West Ninth Street in the M1 Light Industrial District in twenty seventeen was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Staff would note that the property in question is in the Highway two eighteen corridor. Corridor, staff would also note that there appears to be another business nearby that utilizes the city right-of-way for parking purposes. Staff would note that allowing parking in the right-of-way in this area would appear to be a benefit to the infill development of lots located in this area considering the presence of auto sale shops and salvage yards. Allowing parking in the city right-of-way in certain situations could be a method to en- encourage greater infill development in this area. Engineering recommends denial of this appeal by citing prohibiting for-sale vehicles in the right-of-way and that the owner of the property in question is other establishments throughout the city that are failing to that are failing to comply with engineering and planning ordinances. Therefore, staff recommends that the appeal to the city engineer prohibiting vehicles from parking on the city on right of way located between the street and property line of seven twenty one dash seven twenty seven Birmingham Avenue be approved for the following reasons. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on the neighborhood. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on ve- vehicle and pedestrian traffic with another business in the immediate vicinity utilizing the right of way for parking vehicles. The request is in conformance with the future land use map. Subject to the following condition, the parking area will not block the street system in the area. Any questions?
Thank you. Uh, any questions for staff?
This is Schubert. Um, I would assume that this is they've been parking vehicles here for quite some time now. Um. What effect is this permit going to allow them to have? Just not getting notices every few months for for violating something?
This is trader with staff, yes. And because of the um change in use that um switched it to sales vehicles, they have been getting those notice of violations from the code enforcement department. So if approved, um that would mean parking is allowed in that area, including sales vehicles.
Uh, second question. What about like snow removal in the area? What is currently being done or is that been? I know there may never be anyone here that can speak on this, but um if that's a concern while moving snow.
Yeah, this trader with staff, I am not positive on that. I I would guess they might push it to the southwest side of Birmingham, um which um has a little bit of extra right of way, but I'm not positive on that.
Uh, Commissioner Listico, uh, is there a shortage of parking in the area? My my knowledge of that area would say there probably isn't, but.
This trader with staff, mo- most of the public roads in this area are um seal coat roads. So so they're not, well, I think they're seal coat. Jamie can correct me if I'm wrong on that, but they're not quite the typical normal um concrete or asphalt roads with curb and gutters. I I'm not sure what's currently allowed for on-street parking. Usually, most of the seal coat roads would not allow that. Um, there's a mix of both residential properties and commercial businesses in this area. The commercial businesses tend to be on smaller lots with pretty limited amount of onsite parking, such as this site in question.
This is Do Not. I have a question about the recommendation between planning and zoning department and the uh recommendation to deny from the engineering department. Would somebody like to talk about why there's a difference?
Jamie, Kansas City Engineer. We have had over the last number of years complaints code, you know, with code enforcement, general complaints from a number of businesses in that area. They're parking all over where they shouldn't be. So then engineering, because we deal with the right of way, we have to deal with it. Um, that's half of the reason we are suggesting denial. The other half of it is this particular property owner has um several other sites around town where they have not provided site plans, stormwater detention, and other things that are required under the engineering ordinances as well as planning's ordinances. Um, and I. We were hoping that we wouldn't be allowing this to, when this property owner isn't in compliance in other places, to give him this option here in this particular place. But that's the some of the reasoning behind it.
That make.
Go ahead.
That makes sense to me. My next question would be to the planning department. Why is there a difference?
This is trader with staff. So um over the years, we've seen a a a few of these, couple of handful uh of these type of appeals to allow parking within the right of way. And they've historically kind of been looked at on a case by case basis to determine if it's thought that it would cause any issues. This one's a little bit unique in that historically there has been parking in the right of way on this one, uh although there was the change in use to auto sales, which kind of intensified the parking. The ordinances currently prohibit parking within that right of way, that area between the edge of the road and the property line. But um at some point in the city's history, it was actually not only allowed, but encouraged. So there are some areas of town where that parking within that parking, as it's called, which is why it got named that, uh that area between the edge of the roadway and the property line um have parking and some of it is, you know, doesn't have a real clear um history, how, when it was put there, how much parking has occurred there. Um, and then regarding the uh issue with the property owner's planning was a little bit concerned. Um, trying to address that with this particular one, although um and this property is owned by and the applicant is A and D Auto Sales. And although the owner of A and D Auto Sales may in fact be the same individual as the other properties that um the city engineer is expressing concerns to, it's not A and D Auto Sales. So we had a little bit of concern trying to attach that to, you know, since it's different ownership, even though the individual that owns both businesses is the same.
Okay, so would there just be changes in the rules to allow for the parking or changes in the code? Or or what would be on file?
Permit, right? It I mean, it's currently allowed through this appeal system, which is, yeah, called a permit in the ordinance if it's the appeal is approved. I I don't think there's, and Mr. Knudson can comment to this, but I don't think there's any interest to change the ordinance to allow parking within the right of way in new developments. Like if we're laying out a new subdivision, we don't generally want to see parking within the right of way. But.
I understand.
But there are some of these older areas that the issues do come up.
Okay.
Uh, I got I got a question, Commissioner Listico. Regardless of whether or not this item is passed, I don't see it as setting any kind of a precedent, correct? Because uh there's a process and we're simply just going through that, right? So.
I would agree with that and, you know, this is a a pretty unique site as well. And that's, you know, you're if if you're looking at something and act on it based on the uniqueness of a site, that usually limits precedent as well.
Thank you. Uh, one one final question. Uh, I see that the there is some parking going on at the corner there. And uh would would staff or engineering have any concerns on uh that being a safety hazard right right at the intersection?
Jamie, Kansas City Engineer, there's always concerns about that. And there are some site triangles and things that we would look at. Again, if we get complaints, we'd have to go out and take a look at it. And then if he's not meeting them, then we would cite him for that. Um, so again, it's it's. It's something we would look at if there were complaints.
Very good, thank you.
This is Poe. That that's my kind of a follow up question is what? Under the staff recommendation, it says uh the request would not appear to have a negative impact on the neighborhood. Um, how do you guys determine that?
This is trader with staff, so. We recognize that that is a fairly subjective analysis, but um we meet as staff and review all the requests that have been submitted and kind of discuss what the request is and discuss some of the impacts and assess whether or not we think it would have a negative impact or not. So it's an assessment, but I I admit it's subjective.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, are there any other questions? Is the applicant here or on Zoom? Okay, I think we could possibly entertain a motion on this item then.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Dave Bowson, I'm looking at that photograph on page thirty nine that you had up on the screen a little bit ago. And my question is, is uh if that's the the actual lot, it appears that portions of that building are encroaching on the right of way also. So has this business applied for a variance to encroach on that right of way?
This is trader with staff. Um, it's definitely very close. We would have to take a closer look at that. Uh, I would guess it's probably not. And that's, you know, part of the issue with the the aerials not being that one hundred percent accurate. It could also be that the building up to the foundation wall isn't and potentially a little bit of overhang is, of which, under new code standards, we wouldn't uh allow for an overhang to go into a right of way. But again, this these buildings have been there for a very long time.
Uh, thank you. Any anyone else got a questions here? All right, we we can go ahead and, uh, like I said, we'll entertain a motion on this item then.
This is Schubert. I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion uh to approve the appeal uh to the city engineer program vehicles parking on the city owned right of way located between the street and property line of seven twenty one to seven twenty seven Birmingham Avenue. Subject to the following condition, the parking area will not block the street system in the area.
Uh, thank you. There's a motion, is there a second?
Just a note, anyone can second it regardless of how you intend to vote.
Second, Ewing.
Okay, thank you. There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Do we maybe want to roll call on this one?
Uh, yeah, we can roll call. Let's go ahead and roll call this one. Uh, no discussion, right?
Well, yeah.
I I would say, uh, so I do business um somewhat in this neighborhood across the river off of Vinton and Sycamore Street. And there is an auto lot uh directly across the street from our office that uh really does, they they park right next to the street. And when you're pulling out onto Vinton Street, um it is, I mean, Vinton Street is much busier than Birmingham, of course, but um it is a pain in the neck. And just the other week, I saw an accident uh coming onto Sycamore Street. It definitely um causes uh vision of oncoming the blocks of your vision from oncoming traffic. So um although Birmingham's not a a busy street, I would consider it. Um, I I do feel for the the residences in that neighborhood, uh especially if the the staff recommendation is a a bit subjective from the sounds of it. Um, yeah, I just don't see how that would be kind of fair to the to those residences in that neighborhood.
Uh, thank you. Uh, reflecting who Commissioner posed comments, uh, it's something that a safety issue compounds because in that particular intersection, a lot of folks are speeding through there to beat a train sometimes. But again, uh, we can go ahead and do a roll call vote here, I think. We don't have any other questions or comments.
Can I? I got this void I got question. So the motion was to go ahead and approve.
So a yes vote would be to approve and no vote would be to deny.
All right.
Yes. Uh, so we'll start over here with Commissioner Do Not.
Um, no.
No? Com- Commissioner Poe?
Uh, no vote.
Commissioner Commissioner Listico? Yes. Commissioner Schubert?
Yes.
Commissioner Ewing?
No.
Commissioner Shirk?
No.
Commissioner Voight?
No.
Uh, the motion fails.
Commissioner Schaefer on? She was indicated that she might be online, but I don't think she was, so.
I I haven't heard any ayes or nays the whole time, so I didn't assume it. So uh that motion did not carry and that that request was denied then.
Mr. Chair, did Commissioner, did Commissioner Poe vote? You voted no or did you not vote?
Commissioner Poe voted no.
Yeah, uh, I'll, yes, I voted no.
I had it two to five, two yeses, five nos.
All right, that's why we come together. Um, is there any other discussion? None? Um, with that, then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Schubert.
Second, Ewing.
Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Of course not.